We need to get this first session called order, so if you're not here for the pedestrian walk, please leave the room. Barbara's record on?
Yes.
Erica, you gonna lead us through this?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Okay, if we can cut the noise up, we'd appreciate it, Erica. We'll lose the discussion on this.
Mr. Chairman, the issue at hand is how we are interpreting the phrase shortest practicable pedestrian route. This is the phrase that says-
And maybe story, folks.
As needed, write it down, play in.
This is the phrase that says how you measure the separation between a marijuana facility and one of the protected land uses identified in codes such as schools, religious assemblies, et cetera, et cetera. Until now, the municipality has been interpreting the measuring of this route in accordance with guidance from other portions of municipal code, specifically Title IX or traffic code, which gives instructions about where pedestrians can legally cross streets. In business districts, it is legal for pedestrians to cross at any crosswalk, and a crosswalk is defined as a location where streets intercept. So anytime there's an intersection, there is a crosswalk, whether or not it is marked on the ground in any way with paint. There has been some interest in making a change to this interpretation, and the Community and Economic Development Committee did work out a proposal, which is in this draft AIM. And the change, there's two changes proposed. One is that when you are measuring a shortest practicable pedestrian route across a major arterial street, and our major arterial streets are, or higher classification streets, but those are streets like Tudor Road, Northern Lights, Benson, Minnesota, north of Tudor, Debar, Boniface, Muldoon, Lake Otis, you know, are larger streets, generally four or more lanes. When you're measuring the shortest practicable pedestrian route across one of those streets, you have to measure the route as going across a marked crosswalk, which generally happens at a traffic light. However, the concern with that is that it did open the door to allow a marijuana facility directly across a major arterial from a protected land use, and this was a concern because it seems to violate both the spirit of the separation from the municipal law and state law and the federal guidance that we have through the COLE memo. So to accommodate that, the second change that is proposed and which would require a change to municipal code is a 200-foot-as-the-crow-flies separation between marijuana facilities and protected land uses. And so you would kind of, when you're looking at the situation, you would start with that 200-foot-as-the-crow-flies separation, and if you maintained that between your proposed marijuana facility and your protected land uses, then you would start looking at the 500-foot pedestrian route, which, again, for major arterials, would have to be measured as crossing at a stoplight. There's two minor bits about the 200-foot that we would need to work out that are kind of misstated in the AIM. One, so we put in lot line to lot line, but you may recall that for athletic fields and playgrounds, we don't actually measure to the lot line of those facilities. We measure to the edge of the athletic field and the playground. So we need to add in that distinction that we're not intending to change the end measuring point of the protected land use. And then the other thing is you could end up with a situation where you have a very large lot, think of something like Chautauqua Commons or the REI Mall or something, where you have a protected land use at one end of that very large lot, and then adjacent to that lot at the other end, you have a proposed marijuana facility, where the pedestrian route may be, you know, 1,000 feet or more, but you would have more than, or you would, they would not be separated by 200 feet. So we're still kind of brainstorming about how to address that situation, but I think, and again, we'll do this through code changes, but I think it'll end up being probably some sort of variance or exception with certain criteria to address that issue, because it's hard to, it's hard to state it in a really clear way, but we're, if anyone has any ideas about that, I'd love to hear them. I did pass out some illustrations of how this change will affect two potential marijuana facilities that I am aware of. The first one is a proposal to go in at a location on Tudor Road. This is immediately east of the Stewart Highway, and it's in a little building that most recently, I don't know if it's currently, but most recently was occupied by the Sidus Ergonomic Furniture Store, and they're directly across the street from Shellikoff Street, which has a light bulb store on the corner, and then one lot in, there's a church. If you measure in the way that we have been measuring to date so far, the shortest pedestrian route from the front entrance of the proposed marijuana facility to the lot line of the church, crossing at an allowed intersection, is 393 feet, so that would not be allowed. If you turn, however, to page two, you can see, and I apologize, the gray circle around the lot is pretty faint, I wasn't able to change the color, but we put a 200-foot buffer around the marijuana facility, and you can see that that does not intersect with the lot line of the church, so we're good on the 200 feet. And then you would measure your 500-foot shortest pedestrian route. You would leave the lot of the marijuana facility, head west to the traffic light at the Frontage Road, cross the street, come back along Tudor, and then go south on Shellikoff to the church, and that distance is over 2,200 feet. So with this change, as reflected in the AIM and the subsequent code change that'll be needed, this would become a legal location for marijuana facility to open. The second example is on pages three and four, and this is going to be a little bit more difficult for you to see, because my aerial photography is not up to date, but there is a tennis court, which is considered an athletic field, at the southern end of Minnesota Park. And so if you measure by, as, again, as we've been currently measuring, you come out of the marijuana facility, go across Minnesota at 32nd, and straight down to the edge of the tennis court, which is 464 feet and therefore prohibited. However, turning to page four, the 200-foot buffer around the proposed marijuana facility does not actually touch the tennis court. You'll have to take my word for it, because, again, the tennis court's not on the picture. And then the shortest practicable pedestrian route under this new interpretation would go up to Boniface, across and back down, giving a route of over 1,800 feet. So this would become a legal location for marijuana facility under this new interpretation. The other thing that we have brought, thanks to the planning department, is a large map of the Anchorage Bowl, which shows both a 200-foot buffer around the protected land uses and a 500-foot buffer. We can't use GIS to show shortest pedestrian route for, you know, obvious reasons, if a case-by-case basis, but this at least gives you kind of a sense of what's allowed. So you're all welcome to come look at this map as well. And I am finished, if you have any questions.
Mr. Whittleton?
No.
I just wanted your comments, if you've got any questions.
Okay, no, good, I just want to make sure, this is my, one thing I want to, as we've grappled with this, and a lot of the people in here have through this, what we're trying to do is keep the sphere of influence of marijuana operations out of the sphere of influence of protected categories. And we're looking at, how do you do that? And probably thousands of ways, and one is as a crow flies, and what we've landed on as far as the state goes is a pedestrian route. Use that some way, somehow, poorly defined, to say, how do we keep these uses so they're not overlapping in their influence? And that, so that's what we're trying to do. So we've gotten bogged down a lot of times in discussions of, well, is it safe to cross that road, or what's the rules and so on, and walking, and it's really not about that so much, it's about those spheres of influence. So we've combined in this the 200 feet as the crow flies, essentially, and that's to prevent some of the most egregious possibilities, where you'd have something right across the street from the protected use, marijuana operation across from a protected use. But then we've also kept the walking route, but in a way that the large arterials such as Minnesota, you could have something almost right across the street on Minnesota, but you barely notice it, you're really in a different world, we've got six lanes of busy traffic, landscaping that's very far away realistically in how we operate. Whereas if you're across the street from, say, Collector's Spinnard Road, you're pretty closely connected, people walk across Spinnard Road like this, it's that kind of district. So that's why we've got the separate rules for collectors and, you know, arterials, and I think, did we, are we using controlled access, or do we still have that in there?
It's major arterials and anything that is above, and it, yeah, it does have some statements about controlled access.
Okay, so Minnesota and Stewart Highway and so on, if you're opposite sides of that, but, you know, you're really a world apart. So that's what we're striving for here, is really thinking spheres of influence is to keep them separate. And attempts to simplify everything, I don't know if we've managed to do that, but I think it is understandable. Thank you, Josh.
You've got more, sir? Mr. Evans, sir, and then Mr. Dunbar?
Yeah, I just, I'm fine with the proposed amendments, it seems to make these situations work. I'm not sure how it plays out in other situations where it hasn't, I guess, I struggle with the sphere of influence, and technically, probably, you know, a debate should, and someone did when we set the regulations in the first place. But I guess I'm not sure what it is we're trying, what is the actual thing we're trying to protect. For instance, we have a church across a busy street from a marijuana facility. It would help me know whether, what the distance should be if I knew what it was I was trying to protect against, and I just don't understand it, and maybe the committee has looked into it, or is it, we don't want to see something? Is it, we think that there's going to be gunplay? Is it, I just, I can't make a reasonable determination on distances without knowing exactly what it is I'm trying to protect, and I hope you can help.
You know, I'm not sure I can. I think it's poorly defined, and we get these from the state, and then we added a few to the city, a few protected uses, but we did not really define what we're trying to protect. My sense at this point is, so they don't get mad about it. Just don't get mad about it. But we've gotten emails, we got one that said, you know, this operation, this proposed operation is less than five miles from a school, and they were outraged. Well, that's quite a large distance, really. So it's a different distance for everybody, so I don't know if we can. My mind is, if we can get to a place where people are kind of like, okay, since we worked, we're probably good.
The other question?
Follow-up real quick. This is a more detailed aspect of it, and it's for Erica. Looking at the Minnesota one, on the tennis court, that kind of should be there, marijuana facility, but it looks like the 200-foot circle of influence there actually cuts through the park, but doesn't reach the tennis court. So I guess the park itself, where kids may play or whatever, is not protected, but if the kids are playing tennis, it would be protected.
The, yes, the, and kids are an important thing, and it doesn't necessarily correlate with all the protected land uses, but the federal guidance in the COLE memo, and I'm sure Mr. Fawley can probably give a clearer explanation, but the federal guidance in the COLE memo definitely says to keep marijuana away from locations where kids, you know, spend time or likely to be a lot. But, and so they talk about, you know, schools, recreation centers, athletic fields, playgrounds, but we didn't end up selecting all parks, because there are lots of parks that are, you know, just completely wooded, and so when we looked at maps, you may remember, we looked at maps originally, we did have parks, and all parks in a protected use, and it, you know, really didn't leave, it was one of those things that left, was the concern that there just weren't enough places left to open a marijuana business, and so we narrowed it down instead of all parks, just to locations where we're sure that there are activities that are going to draw children, athletic fields and playgrounds. That does not mean that there won't be children in other parts of parks, but we kind of had to draw a line, and that was where it was drawn.
Dunbar, sir?
So I just wanted to start by complimenting the Community and Economic Development Committee for the work they have done on this. I have gone to those relevant committee meetings, while we've had very extensive discussion on this, and input from the industry. Stephanie Romello, I don't know if she's here today, but the traffic engineer, I think she has really done a very good job on this, and Erica has as well, there's been a lot of effort put into these regulations. And I know members of the public, and certainly members of the industry feel, to a certain extent, these are overly complicated, but I think the reason that they have emerged in this fashion is because of the amount of thought that went into them. They're trying to make it so that you have a functioning industry, but still keep the separation between, as Mr. Whittleton calls, spheres of influence. And I think that the East Tudor Road example is a good one about why this AM or AIM, AIM, works. So I was a very strong proponent of making sure that we didn't use unmarked crosswalks on Tudor Road specifically, because we have had, at the University Community Council, a lot of discussion about another intersection not too far down the road here called Wright, where people are constantly running across Tudor Road. I also represent Muldoon, as is Mr. Peterson, and we've had fatalities on that road on unmarked intersections. So in this case, I think, you can see the church there, you can see the marijuana facility. If you were to pretend that church, you want to keep them separate, and you want to keep the children separate, for example, I would argue that that road, or legally acknowledging that children can cross that road at that unmarked intersection, is far more dangerous than that marijuana facility. On the other hand, if the church was not set back as it is, and was directly across the street, you could see how that might lead to some anger in the public. So again, not too far down the road here, we have the Gospel Rescue Mission directly across the street from a liquor store. And the liquor industry has different regulations to apply to them, but Dick and I have both received a number of complaints, I believe, I know I have, about the location of that liquor store so close to that, to that Gospel Rescue Mission. So I guess my overall point is, I like where we landed, and I hope this allows people to make smart investment decisions while simultaneously protecting the public. And again, I am very appreciative, Erica and Stephanie and everyone else involved, that we acknowledge it is not safe to cross major arterials on unmarked intersections. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think we have hit what I would consider a happy medium here with the changes, and I think someone would say that wherever we draw the lines, it's going to be arbitrary. So I don't think, we're not going to please everyone, no matter where we draw them. And I think it makes sense that we have set up the 200-foot rules so that, if the crow flies rules, so that something is not exactly directly across the street from something, even though the practical pedestrian route is 200 feet, that, I think, meets the spirit of the law, so to speak. And the tennis court on Minnesota Drive, I can't believe that thing is even still there. I was living in that neighborhood back in the early 80s, and no one used it then, and no one, no one uses it now, so I think it makes sense that we are going to allow that particular person to get that license there.
Mr. Croft, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I am familiar with the tennis courts, you actually write the, the not used as a public law. The Tudor Road looks familiar, and I kept trying to place it on, and I finally did. Yeah, Tudor Field goes on the left, or whatever that, right, that means, but then just on the lower right is soccer fields, and they're hugely summer.
Let me interrupt here, it's our Waldorf Park we created, Seventy Days with the City always a soccer park.
Yes, and I'm familiar with it by parking at, right across, and there's sort of overflow parking for all the kids' soccer, right across from the marijuana facility, and so I parked there a bunch, and if the kids do their soccer, there's multiple fields there. It does, the question that I've been, you framed very well, what is it exactly, are we, the Seventy Days church, I've been around for a while, and it's not, doesn't seem very well-used, I'm sure I'm amazed where they're having services it is, is the church, or the children's soccer field, or the bingo, what we're concerned about? And I think this is probably a good accommodation, I want to think about it some more, but it seems like part of the problem is we've lumped a whole bunch of things together that have very different concerns about. Schools being the clearest to me about why that, why that's the potential difficulty. Churches, I'm not sure what the danger is, I can see what the area danger is, I'm not sure what the danger is in every city, it's a little church.
Thank you, Mr. Croft. For those who are looking at picture one, see this little white building here that's there right through the end of the picture? Do you ever seen that building? DA. So if you really want to open marijuana place right across the street from there, I'm sure DA is going to be watching. That's their DA facility right here, it's right there. So we got into this because the individual that has that property wants to have a marijuana use. That's why they have sent us, you can do all the dynamics you want about worrying about jaywalking. Now, someone brought this to us, this individual that wanted to use this property for a marijuana dispensary, that's why I got here. Any questions for us, any members who have any comments? If you want to testify in front of us, you've got three minutes, so please come forward. Amy, you're on the line, any questions?
I am, I was just going to let you know, I have to sign off now, okay, Dave?
Okay, don't hit anything.
That's great, thank you so much.
She's driving.
Erica, I'd ask one follow-up question. So on the, on page two of three at the bottom, it says, the route across major arterials and higher classification streets, is higher classification streets, is that a sort of term of art, or is that encompass several different types of classifications? Could you walk me through that?
So it refers to the classification of streets in the official streets and highways plan. I just printed out the map from that, but you can find it on the planning department's publication page. So things that are higher classification from major arterial are expressways and freeways. We have one expressway in our community, it's International Airport Road, and then our freeways are Stewart Highway, Glen Highway, and Minnesota Drive south of Tudor going to Stewart Highway.
So just a follow-up to that, I know that we were at one point talking about adding minor arterials, that doesn't seem to have happened. It's something, minor arterials are not included in higher classification, or generally don't overlap, is that fair?
They would not be included. Minor arterials would capture things like Spinnard Road, Northwood Street, Fireweed, 36th Avenue, Denali Street.
How about Lake Otis?
Lake Otis is a major arterial, north of Abbott Road, and a minor arterial south of the road that you're in, there, I don't think there's much commercial down there.
That's great, thank you, Erica. If anybody would like to come testify, please come up, you've got three minutes of time. Raise your fingers when the three minutes are up. So we just need your names.
What if Hugh Wade? We're making progress. I'm a, I own, I am the one that owns the one on Tudor, I'm also represent clients, I'm a real estate broker, and I have lived through my whole life, and cared about security, and it's good to have more commerce and more business in real estate. If I had my way, you would use the same standard to measure it for all levels of roads, which would be marked crosswalks, lit crosswalks. It seems to make the most sense just to have one standard. I understand why that, it had arrived at that. If I also had my way, I'd have you include minor arterials, which are some pretty major roads, like Arctic, there's a lot of them, and also commercial and industrial collectors. I understand politically that's probably not going to happen, but if you sought to be, to have that standard among more roads, you would essentially open up the city a little bit more to the industry, which I think will be good along with the property taxes, for businesses, for jobs, for people paying their mortgages, a lot of stuff. So that's probably not going to happen, but I do ask that you would include commercial and industrial collectors, because those typically are not very long roads in distance, they're generally in industrial areas. Industrial areas are generally, the cheapest forms of real estate in town are encroached by a lot of other uses, like gymnastics clubs, and churches, and a lot of, you know, somewhat B3 uses, but if you open up the industrial, what April is really hurting is, or real estate costs are so much more expensive compared to the valley, at least, you know, so we're getting, kind of getting, the rest of state is getting the rest of the cultivation market, but for the power of our model, of the integrated model with the, with having the small grow, with the small retail store, it could allow some of those industrial properties to do that, but, you know, so that's all I would ask, I think it makes sense, is just give them a little bit back, you got the crow flies, 200, and it'd just be a little bit, a little bit of a, a little bit of give to get for a little bit more industry. Thank you.
Any questions? Let's see, any members?
I have a question. So, and again, so we have all these different terms for roads, the commercial, industrial collectors, are those, are those under higher classification as well, or is that another separate category?
So from the top down, the classification goes freeway, expressway, major arterial, minor arterial, collector, local.
And there's different kinds of collectors?
Yes.
There's a variety of collectors.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you for testifying, sir. Any else who wants to talk to us right now? We've got a lot of people here, come on forward.
Through the chair, I would just like to thank Mr. Whittleton and the entire Economic Community Development Committee, because they have put in, it's always actually the same people, sometimes I just like to introduce you again, tons of time into this, and I think Erica did an amazing job, and I'd also like to thank Erica, because she took time Wednesday out of her personal life and missed part of the World Series, and she's a Cubs fan, to come and talk to our English Business Association for well over an hour, so thank you for doing that, and I thought you should know that. I just wanted to reiterate Erica's point about the lot-to-lot language, and how it does need to hopefully get tweaked. If I may approach, I brought just a couple printouts just to show that impact.
The curtain's taken, I mean, okay.
And I only brought five copies, I guess, you're like completely healed. It just shows that huge REI example that Erica was talking about, how much space I would actually take up, and sort of really stress the importance of figuring out that lot-to-lot line for a large parcel like that. And then the second page is the Minnesota Park, which shows how long Minnesota Park is, and again, just reiterate the point that we just kind of need to keep that language for the lot-to-lot, and that's really the only stressful comments I have.
Mr. Whittleton?
A couple points, and the Minnesota Park, is that an issue? It's a park, not a thing?
Oh, that just has to do with the tennis field, that's what the tennis field is at.
Okay, but we've been just, in this case, looking just physically, the tennis courts.
Right, right, so what I was saying is the lot-to-lot line, because there is no the language, yeah.
I understand, correct, correct, and I think, my expectations will change that. So the other issue, and this is, and you came up saying it's Erica on it, is the, so your thing is if you have a small lot like Anchorage-
Exactly.
-next to REI, and there may be a protected use in that Northern Lights Mall.
Right.
Okay, and, but under any of the routines we've looked at so far, that would be included. If you have a protected use in the Northern Lights Mall, you would-
If it was at the complete other end, it could be a pedestrian route that is, oh no, you're right, because you-
It's always law, law, law.
-the pedestrian route to the lot line.
Property, it's always where the property goes on.
Right, so that's just something-
Anyway, that's not an issue.
You're throwing a whole new thing at us.
Well, I'm thinking of if the strip mall was- Well, I'm thinking of if the strip mall was condo, condo minimized, wouldn't it be that condo line in between those? Say you have strip mall one through 10, and they're all owned separately, would it still be? I mean, I don't have that issue for a client, but I just wonder.
It's still considered the one large line.
Okay, so, not my issue, but the purchase, more my issue.
But, John, you had something... I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. John, you brought this up before too. I mean, we had talked about that. You know, if you were on the other side of the Northway Mall, I mean, or the Diamond Center, for example, what are we trying to accomplish here? You know? And are we being impractical with how much we're including in that case? I don't know if this AIM is where we address that, or Erica, what do you think? Do you think that's something we should think about here, or would that require a separate AIM or a separate ordinance change?
It would require a code change, so I think we can still define how we're interpreting sort of practical pedestrian out through the AIM, and then, if we want to reopen that issue, that can be done with the code change.
Any other questions?
Just making a comment, there is kind of a sense of urgency to get something forward, because people are waiting on it. And even though I would say this is probably some old living document, we might find in two years that none of these people care, and that list gets chopped down to protected uses or something. But at this point, we do want to get something fairly quickly, so they're not in that mode.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. Anybody else who wants to testify, come on forward. Erica, I noticed on page three, the black building that's at the top on the right-hand side, that's ALIO office. Do we have any distance from that?
I'm going to put one in that office.
Just thought I'd ask. Welcome, sir.
My name is Phil Weisler. I've actually been in front of you guys before, speaking for a client, trying to get their liquor license. So, I never thought I'd be here, but one thing I'm concerned about in regards to the cultivation facilities and your guys in zoning, and the way you guys are kind of grouping them together and putting them in like little clusters, I'm afraid ultimately that one, you know, mishap, one mistake by a simple business owner, you know, or, you know, criminal activity in that area may completely block out that whole area for cultivation facilities. They may get enough response from the residents in that area to have a negative impact on the rest of the cultivation facilities that are actually doing properly. So, that's my big concern right now, and just in regards to the ways, specifically for cultivation.
That's the reason that these businesses, I mean, coming forward, our Economic Development Committee, we have told them, you've got to live by the law. This is a note, and anything you do in your move, anything is going to be impacted by the...
Yeah, I'm not concerned about me. I'm concerned about other businesses.
John, just a question. I think your phrase was that we, as an assembly or whatever, city government, is putting cultivation in little clusters. We're not really choosing locations for anybody. I mean, there is zoning that restricts to certain areas, but if, at this point, businesses are clustered together, it's the choice of the operator.
Well, it's choice of the operator because of the choice of the portion of the industry that they go into. So, if they choose to go into cultivation facility, they have to be in a certain type of zoning versus being in a retail center, there's a different type of zoning requirement. So, putting a type of zoning requirement on a cultivation facility, which has very little environmental impact at all, and even in my instance, I'm not putting any signage up. So, the environment, so the community wouldn't even know I was there if I wasn't online. So, the objective for me is to maintain my security of my operation while at the same time limiting my community impact. I don't want kids to see my signs. I don't want kids to see my marketing materials. That's not my intention. My intention is to open up a business, operate, make money, pay taxes. That's simple. So, why are we essentially segmenting off cultivation and be kind of in their own little area? So, it's not an I1 or I2 zoning. You can't, I mean, you can't grow in that area.
You can grow in B3.
B3, if it's like a brew reset, right?
No, but if you have a, if you have a...
Questions for us, any members? Thank you, sir. Anybody else who wants to address this, let me see, should I? It's your chance.
Good afternoon. Nick Miller. I do appreciate the work. I think you've given me to define the pedestrian route as much as we could. I do, I don't agree with the 200-foot measurement. I'm yet to figure out what we're trying to protect. You know, we've, we not only have the protected uses that the federal government has said we had for the drug-free zones, but we've added, you know, another half dozen or so protected uses that, I don't know what we're trying to protect against. Are we trying to protect against someone seeing a building, seeing a sign? You know, they can't see inside the facility. They can't get in. What's protecting the kids are the regulations that the state has put in place. These are just, you know, drive-by-a-sign every day. And if we were really trying to protect these uses, we wouldn't let a church get constructed across the street from an existing marijuana facility. It's going to happen. People are going to build next to them. So, they may not need to be protected, or is it their choice? I just, I'm struggling, and I'm really struggling to figure out what we're trying to protect, other than, it sounds like we're trying to protect maybe some adults who don't want to see a sign. You know, kids aren't going to know what's going on unless they're friends, so. Again, I'm not trying to say the work we're not doing here is good, but it just, it's very frustrating we continue to limit the available property.
Questions for some members? Thank you, sir. Anybody else who wants to talk to us?
Good afternoon, sir. My concern is the 200-foot escrow flies, the facility that I'm trying to open up with my wife. Currently, we're 860-some feet from a church, but as the crow flies, we'd be, from lot line to lot line, we'd be less than 200. And we've been paying rent on this place for six months already, locked in, built a five-year lease. I really wouldn't have any other place to go to here in town. People say that I'm, I could be grandfathered in, but that doesn't give me any assurance. So, just something to consider, you know, just for, thank you.
Questions, any members? Questions? Anybody else who wants to ask questions, sir?
Well, actually, I guess to Erica on your point there, so is, do we have anything officially grandfathered, if they're in the process under a prior interpretation?
I mean, that would be our standard operational procedure, but there's nothing...
Written in?
No, there's nothing specific that's written, and we can add that.
Thanks. Any questions? Pete?
Mr. Chairman, so Erica, you could give him some sort of paperwork, so that he would be able to prove that he had been grandfathered in.
Sure. I think one issue for Mr. Usher's business is that they have their cultivation approval, but they're also planning on doing manufacturing and don't have that approval yet, so this would have an impact on their business plans.
All right, thanks, Erica. When we do grandfather it this way, could we say, you know, if you started the process, or is there some kind of cutoff, necessarily we already approved it, but you're, you've gotten state approval, or you're in the state approval process? I don't know if that would impact if you started that process, or if it's...
We are, we're already calendared for the manufacturing obligation December 15. It should be in front of you.
For the manufacturing?
That's right.
Now, the cultivation's approved, the manufacturing is calendered.
In front of this assembly.
So, is there some way to make sure that they grandfather, you know, we pass this?
Well, this, this gives an intent statement for the 200-foot, but it doesn't, we can't implement the 200-foot until we change code. So, we're not going to change code by, probably not by December 15.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, any members? Thank you. Anybody else who wants to testify, Mark?
Yeah.
Hello, Kathy.
I feel like I'm on the hot seat here.
If you want to, anything added shortly.
Pardon?
Nothing.
Kathy Glisson, currently Vice President of Criminal and Community Council. Greatly appreciate and thank Erica McConnell for coming to our council meeting last night at a late hour to explain this new AIM that the committee has worked, put together, and I do appreciate all the work I've sat in on a few of their meetings, and I know it's a difficult issue to address, so that we meet that intent and we have that balance that everybody's striving for. We did take a position. It was late in the evening, so even though we had a good turnout, a lot of people had left, the vote was 76 to support this. It was not a unanimous kind of view, and for various reasons. So, one of the concerns that some council members had, including myself, I admit I was a no vote, is when I read it, I thought it was, it struck that balance, but when Erica showed me the graphic, when she brought this handout to our meetings last night, on Minnesota, that's where I feel like you're missing the intent. You are not meeting the golden ten, if it would allow for a marijuana facility to be right across the street from a park. And I know that that's not a criteria that you have to meet, but you have to set aside sometimes words on a piece of paper and just the reality of what you would be presenting to the community. There are people that use this park. There are kids that use this park. The whole strategy, whether it's tennis courts or northern tennis courts, and I've seen it enough to know. And I think even though Minnesota is a busy four-lane or, or how many lanes? I mean, people go across that street all the time in non-crosswalk areas, all the time. And so, just the fact that it has the classification of a major arterial, if you would still have, I, in this particular instance, you would have a sphere of influence violation combined with, and some of us who know on this, so I appreciate the effort. I think, I think it's, overall, it's probably good. I'm glad you didn't go down the road of separating out protected uses and trying to define the higher ones versus the lower. But when I look at the page one on the AIM, where it does try and explain what the Cole Mello is all about, which I thought that was a good question, what is it we're trying to protect here? It kind of spells it out, I think, better than any other definition, that if you have a marijuana distribution, let's say a retail establishment, an adult goes in there, purchases it, and then can only wander just a little bit and see, I see some kids over there that I can sell to. That seems to be, I think, what you miss on Minnesota. You've had that potential there on Minnesota, and people go across the street, so.
Your mentor asked.
Okay, so, thank you very much. I appreciate you helping.
Questions for some members? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to talk to us?
Just a recommendation, maybe just apply this to retail stores only, because it seems like the concern, and what we're concerned about here, is access to children. You're not ever going to have access to a cultivation facility or to a manufacturing facility, so I would just recommend that that 200 as the crow flies would really only apply to retail. Second recommendation, if we are going to do a grandfather, anybody that is on the public hearing already or already approved should have a grandfather, and that's kind of how that wording should be. And then, furthermore, the definition of what we're trying to protect as far as over the 200 feet, that is really arbitrage, or you can kind of argue, argue that a lot because of these specific roads, like, that could block out potential, that could block the industry out potentially. So, just be really careful with that 200 feet. The industry is, seems like we're kind of against it, so I just kind of want to, if we are going to do it, please don't apply that to a manufacturing or to a cultivation.
John has a question, sir.
Well, actually, related to that, Erica, so the 200 feet matches generally with the liquor, alcohol.
The bars and liquor stores have to be separated by 200 feet, but that is also measured by a pedestrian route.
Anybody else want to speak to us? We've still got a few minutes left. You don't have to. Okay. And everybody's calling. You don't have to use it, but we're here. You're here.
My name is Gori Man. I'm a resident of West Tancred, part of the Criminal and Community Council, but I'm speaking for myself. I understand all the great work being done and the standard different eaters, I have no objection to the industry, but I feel that all these words are just done to defeat certain protections. So, why would a protection exist at all? I mean, to me, there is a basic conflict, and that's what I wanted to say. So, it'd be a critical way to achieve some business, but the principle of protection is gone, so maybe you should do two things, remove the protection and let it go, you know? And if the protection doesn't make sense anymore. Thank you.
Questions for some members?
Thank you for being here, Matt. Anybody else who wants to speak to us?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Assembly. My name's Mark Overgard, owner of House OP, attempting to open a retail establishment. Really appreciate all the hard work and diligence effort that Mr. Wilton put into this committee and hard work that the legislature have done. Like he's head, right?
I share the blame with several other busy...
Very well. Most of my questions have already been answered with the other attendees that answered the questions. Is, Ms. McConnell, is the major-miner map, the map that you use for, is it available to the public?
Yes, it is. It exists in the Official Streets and Highways Plan, which can be found on the municipal website. I have my copy.
Sweet. Thank you. And how and when will the Assembly adopt or amend these proposed changes by Ms. McConnell and the rest of the Assembly?
Sir, you need to give us your testimony. We don't answer this guideline. We don't answer the questions. I'm sorry.
Or just testimony?
Just testimony, sir.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, I don't think I have anything to...
Go ahead, Mr. Dunbar.
There's some questions of direction, is what I'm looking for.
I'd ask, I'd like to ask from Ms. McConnell, what do you think we might be able to get these regulations?
It's not the way around, but it works.
Well, I mean, we could certainly have that AIM regrouted soon. I understand there isn't supposed to be an addendum for next assembly meeting.
What's the deadline? Are we going to...
That's up to the chair.
Oh, okay. So...
She isn't here, but...
Get it to us soon.
Okay, and then, the ordinance amendment, we could, you know, come shortly after that. I mean, I'm sure we can get it wrapped up by the end of the year.
So, do you think we have the AIM under 15?
I think so.
I'm too ignorant to know if this is an opinion or a question. I'm wondering if you only meet one of, if the AIM is adopted and you only meet one of the criteria because of the new AIM, are you, do you have to meet both criteria of 500 feet and the AIM 200 feet to be eligible for retail or marijuana?
Erica?
So, once, once the code is amended to add the 200 feet, you have to meet both, the 200 feet as the crow flies and the 500-foot pedestrian.
And there's some question about grandfathering in for people that are already in process that will be addressed by the later day. I genuinely appreciate your time this afternoon.
Any questions? Thank you for being here, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else who wants to speak to us for the amendments? I don't know. Just got a motion to adjourn and get out of here. It's been a minute. Second. Adjourn, thanks for being here.